The League of Women Voters of Greater Tucson welcomes you to our beautiful library today. Thank you for showing up to learn more about Pima County Board of Supervisor District Four Candidates. That's a really big mouthful. I'm Emily Birdson. I'm president of our local league. I do live in a different district. I met these two for the very first time today, so I don't have any affiliation, so best of wishes and good luck to you both. And before we go over the rules today, let's begin with our acknowledgements. We respectfully acknowledge that the League of Women Voters of Greater Tucson is on the land of territories of indigenous peoples. Today, Arizona is home to 22 federally recognized tribes with Thawna-Atham and Pascoyaki people. We also humbly acknowledge that for most of its history, our organization has not been welcoming to women of color. To quote our CEO at the League of Women Voters of the U.S., Virginia Casey Solomon, "Even during the civil rights movement, the league was not as present as we should have been. While activists risked life and limb to register black voters in the South, the league's work and our voters were late in joining to help protect all voters at the polls. It wasn't until 1966 that we reached our first position to combat discrimination. Still, our focus on social policy was from afar, not on the front lines, and African-Americans were shut out of the vision of the league. Today, we invite all people, regardless of gender, gender identity, ability, ethnicity, or race, to join us as we commit to righting the wrongs of our past and building a stronger, more inclusive democracy." The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan political organization. We are encouraging informed and active participation in government, and that's why we're here today. We neither support nor oppose candidates or political parties at the level, at any level of government. We do, however, advocate for public policy such as voting rights, nondiscrimination, civil rights, and criminal justice reform. We have been empowering voters and defending democracy in Greater Tucson for 83 years. Okay, so today, the purpose of this forum is to provide the audience an opportunity to listen and learn about the positions before they vote. We'll set a climate that's comfortable for each candidate to express his or her views, and we really want to keep it civil today. So, no insulting comments, interruptions, and if that does happen from either candidates or in the audience, we're going to have to, for the audience, we'll ask you to politely leave, but we just really want to have an informal discussion today that really gives us some more information about each candidate. The format is as follows. So, opening statements. Each candidate will have two minutes each to talk about their positions, major issues of interest on the community, and their personal background, and then we'll go back and forth. Each candidate will have 90 seconds to answer, and then closing statements will be two minutes as well. It depends how many questions that we have today. It may run from an hour to an hour twenty. We'll see how many questions that we have from the audience. We do have two questions to start out with, and then we have question sorters that will be, so if you have questions, write them down, raise your hand. They'll come up here, and we'll sort them as we go. There are a couple of ground rules. There will be no unauthorized videos or recordings, so if you have a phone, please silence your phone or turn it off. We are live streaming this, I believe, and then we'll have a recording that goes out afterwards. And really, this is to just ensure that nothing is taken out of context or no snippets, so that's the only reason why. So, please adhere to that. Let's see. So, at the end, we'll give everybody a round of applause, but we'll save that to the very end, and so in between, when they give their responses, please hold that. And then today, our volunteers. So, Shelley Erickson is our timekeeper up front. She'll be telling us all, so thank you. She'll be telling the candidates when they're running out of time. Sherry Springer and Anna Nigren are question sorters up here, and then Sharon Begow and Stovey Wells are question gatherers. So, they'll be going throughout the audience. Just raise up your card, and they'll pick them up and bring them up to the front here, and then we'll pass them off to me. So, I only have two questions. The rest of our content will come from the audience, just so you know. Okay, I think those are the rules. Both candidates have asked me to refer to them by their first name, so, and then we flipped a coin, and Mr. Steve Christie will begin with the first two minutes, and then Ms. Vanessa Bectall will begin after that, and so I'll refer to you as Steve and Vanessa moving forward, if that's still okay. So, if we don't mind, we'll start the timer with two minutes. Does anybody have any questions? Are the candidates ready? Okay, so Steve, your first two minutes, sir.
Well, thank you, and thank you for putting this forum on. It's always great to be with the League of Women Voters and growing up, they always had a significant role in the political process, and when the stamp of League of Women Voters was involved, you know that it was a serious, unbiased, professional organization that was conducting a very important service. So, I thank you very much for the League of Women Voters for being here and for putting this forum on. I am a native Tucsonan, born and raised, attended Sam Hughes Elementary School, Mansfield Junior High School, one year at Greenfields. My parents moved here from Ohio in 1950, and I was born in 1954, and shortly after I was born, my parents separated and divorced. My mother stayed and three years later remarried to a car dealer here by the name of Ed Galloway, and he was my stepdad, and I was raised by him, and many of you of a certain age may remember Galloway Motors. That was my stepdad. And then when I was a sophomore in high school, I wanted to see what it was like to live with my father in Ohio, so I went and moved to Ohio and lived with him, went to, finished high school there, went on to the American University in Washington, D.C., and graduated with, of all things, a degree in political science. And then I'd come back, all of the vacations through high school and college, summer, spring break, semester break, and work at Galloway Motors, and I realized that was going to be my calling, the automobile industry. And I proceeded in that profession and owned and operated the business, and that's my background, that's the community I come from, that's my frame of reference, and that's my area that I have put most of my support in as far as any kind of activities at the Board of Supervisors. I've always had the business community in mind. Thank you.
Okay. Vanessa, you can go ahead with your introduction. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you all for being here this afternoon. I appreciate your participation in this forum. I'm Vanessa Bectall. I'm running for Pima County Supervisor here in District Four because I'm disappointed in the lack of leadership and advocacy that we have. I think that we need and we deserve a leader who is present, who is engaged, excuse me, engaged, and who's willing to work collaboratively to advocate for the neighborhood improvements and the infrastructure investments that we so desperately need in District Four. I have spent the past 20 years in public service, working to make our community better, from focused on land use planning after I earned a master's degree from the University of Arizona, to advocating for historic and cultural preservation, to supporting hundreds of our local businesses through my work in the tourism industry. I work as a vice president at Visit Tucson currently, supporting an industry that is a primary economic driver for Pima County, generating billions of dollars of investment in our community. And I'm also very proud to have served as an honorary commander at Davis-Monthan Air Force Base. To the veterans and the active military who may be here today, I appreciate you and I thank you for your service. So, I want to bring these professional experiences to my role as a county supervisor to work collaboratively with my colleagues on the board. We can certainly disagree on issues, but we need to be able to have constructive dialogue to move for, as a governing body, to move forward with creating solutions to our most pressing issues, and I know we're going to be talking about those issues today. So, I'm eager to advocate for businesses, for neighborhoods, and for the needs of our residents. I'm running because I'm passionate about our community and making Pima County an even better place to live. So, it's time for us to move forward. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you both for the opening. We'll go on to the first two, or first question. So, we'll start with Vanessa. What do you see as the biggest issue in District Four, and how will you address it?
Great question. I think I can answer that in one word, and it's affordability of everything. Everything in our lives due to inflation is more expensive, from groceries to housing to supplies to build new housing. And so, I completely recognize that addressing inflation is beyond the reach of local government, but the Board of Supervisors can do things to help with everybody's concern with affordability. We can support working families. We can support working parents by investing in early childhood education. We can support workforce development to help get people into jobs, or help people who are in jobs to advance in their career, to earn a higher wage, and help their bottom line. We can support infrastructure, and we can support affordable housing. Affordable housing is one of the top issues that I'm hearing from residents as I knock door to door and as I talk with the business community, and so I support investments in those types of issues that help everyday residents with their affordability throughout Pima County. These are issues that we're going to talk about, I'm sure, with other questions that touch on affordability, but I think that is the overarching, primary concern that we have in Pima County right now.
Okay, thank you. Steve, same question. What do you see as the biggest issue in District Four, and how will you address it?
The biggest issue I see in District Four is the fact that many of my constituents and our residents are on fixed incomes and have limited income ability and availability. One of the crippling effects that we have that has been instilled by the board's majority on the Board of Supervisors are property taxes and the rising, and they're, continue to raise them. What happens is when the primary property tax is set, it can be either raised or lowered by the Board of Supervisors, but it never takes into consideration the rising values of the property that they own and home valuations. So, when you have rising property values, the primary property tax rises along with that, and we have seen an incremental increase in property taxes. Folks who have worked all their lives to have a nice affordable home in our district are faced with property taxes that are crippling, and they keep rising. My goal is to be an advocate for the property owner, to make sure that property taxes are kept in check and that they remain, or at least attempt to remain somewhat proper tax neutral, excuse me, property tax neutral. And by doing so, it'll make the affordability issue that's raised by my opponent a lot more available.
Okay, thank you so much. Sorry, conferring on some questions here. Okay, so Steve, you'll start first this time. If elected, what is the first thing that you will do?
Well, I will continue to be an advocate for the business community, for my district, for my constituents. My district and my district office has had roughly 2,400 contacts with our constituency over my tenure, and we have a very unique way that our office is set up. Instead of everybody being downtown, working for me behind a computer, or any, or on the phone, or whatever, we have actual paid staffers out in the areas of the district. We have Lucretia Free out in the Vale Corona de Tucson area, living, working, recreating in that area to be a contact for the constituents. We have Tom Brezny in Green Valley. He lives, works, recreates, has an office in Green Valley for the constituents to go there. We have Beth Borazon, who's not only our chief of staff, but she lives in the Tencaverdi Valley and has lived there for over 20 years and is the contact for the constituents in the Tencaverdi Valley, and she also handles the Mount Lemon Summer Haven area. So, we believe in local, hands-on experience. I call it democracy on the curb, and it's availability to have folks go right to the source where they don't have to come down and wait in line, or get on the phone and get a recording. They see people that they know as neighbors, as fellow residents, who can answer and direct them to help with issues they are facing.
Great, thank you. So, Vanessa, same question. If elected, what is the first thing you'll do?
The first thing I will do is connect with the individuals, whether they are department heads at Pima County, or residents in neighborhoods that feel like they haven't been heard. I believe that we need a lot more collaboration, as I mentioned in my opening, with the colleagues on the board, as well as with county staff. They're the one, the county staff are the ones doing the work from day to day, and I'd like to have a better understanding of where they're seeing roadblocks, where policies and programs that the boards, that the board is approving or not approving are creating hardships for the work that they're doing, and, most importantly, how that aligns with what I'm hearing from residents in District Four with what their needs are and what their concerns are. And I'm not going to go into detail right now, because I know we're going to have questions about what those needs and those concerns are, but the overall sentiment that I'm hearing is that there is a lack of engagement and listening and responding to the needs of constituents in District Four.
Okay, thank you both. So, we'll start now with our questions from the audience. So, we're back to Vanessa first. First question from the audience is, what guides you each day, i.e. your core values?
So, that's a great question. Thank you to whomever answered that. I think, you know, one of the important things about our campaign is that we're talking about working collaboratively with people. And so, one of my core values is really a community value and understanding what kind of lifts us all up. I've worked the past 20 years to make our community better. Primarily, that has been in the nonprofit sector. And so, at the end of the day, you know, I like to make sure I can sleep at night. I have a moral compass, and there are some issues that we have in Pima County that it's going to be really challenging for me to pick a side and make a decision, but I think what is going to put me over that line and help me make that decision is what is the right thing to do for the most people in our community? What is the best thing to do for the residents of Pima County? We oftentimes hear about what is often positioned as, you know, competing interests, things like conservation versus development. Those two things are not mutually exclusive, and I think that's a good example of if we can work together to see what is to the benefit of the residents of Pima County and find common ground, that what's good for Pima County does not have to be at the detriment of, or portrayed as at the detriment of economic development or anything else that we need to do to lift up our community.
Great, thank you. Steve, same question. What guides you each day, i.e. your core values?
Well, coming from the business community and owning and operating a business for several decades, and most of my life, actually, I believe that there's never been a full-fledged advocate for those who have to meet a payroll, have to sign the front of a check, have to hire and fire people, have to recruit and retain individuals who provide opportunities for families in employment, and their voice has been lost. There's no one on the board, and there's really no one in county administration that has ever owned and operated a business. And businesses, small businesses in particular, mom-and-pop stores are the lifeblood of Pima County. They're the ones that hire people. They're the ones that put money in people's pockets. They're the ones that provide the goods and services so necessary in Pima County. No one speaks for them, because no one has ever had that experience. I don't believe there's any candidates that are running at this particular point, and unfortunately in most, in both parties, that has the background and the extensive experience that I do in looking at those factors. My core value is to maintain that the fact that we need business, we need business opportunities, we need jobs, and we need to attract other jobs, and economic development is a core element that drives me. And I believe our county, because of its makeup on the board, as well as those in the county administration, don't have that feeling for businesses or economic development that we need to grow and prosper.
Okay, great. So, thanks for giving all the great questions. I have a pileup here, so that's really helpful. We'll start out with Steve this round. The question is, do you support more public transportation?
I think that there is a very good balance, having served on the Regional Transportation Authority. I was on the original Community and Citizens Advisory Committee. We talked about that back in 2006. The balance that was approached at that particular point, I think, was a fair balance, roughly 30% to 40% of the big pie of the income from the Regional Transportation Authority would go to public transportation. If you look at the ridership or the usage, I think that's a fair assessment. We have a distinct problem of moving traffic from point A to point B. We've had that problem, and we've been able to address most of it through the Regional Transportation Authority, which, by the way, I ended up serving as its chairman after my stint on the State Transportation Board and chairing that as well. So, I think there is a very good balance of public transportation, and we have to keep in mind that the overwhelming usage of transportation mode is the automobile, and that they need to keep that in mind when they're making plans, and the important thing is to keep the ability to have throughput in traffic, so we don't have congestion, we don't have more accidents, we don't have more pollution. Public transportation is a necessity. I wish it was just used more. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Vanessa, same question. Do you support more public transportation?
Yes, I do. Regional transportation is critical to how all of us get around in this community. I know many of you are here in the city limits from Green Valley or Corona de Tucson outside the city limits. Having collaboration and coordination on regional transportation is vital. A few weeks ago, I was meeting with voters in the Tencaverdi Valley, knocking on doors, and I met with a man who has been a widow since his children were in elementary, in elementary school. He takes the bus to his job at Raytheon from the Tencaverdi Valley. His daughter, who is now a freshman at U of A, who is on the spectrum, takes the bus to get to the University of Arizona. To them, they said, public transportation is vital as, for him as a single parent, to be able to go to work and for his daughter to be able to get to school. I generally, with all problem solving, I'm an advocate for regional collaboration with transportation as well. In terms of RTA, the Regional Transportation Authority, I support the reauthorization of RTA. I support the participation by all the different municipalities, and we just need to make sure that the needs of the growing communities in the, with the older infrastructure is balanced with the needs, in particular for public transportation in the urban core of the city of Tucson.
Okay, thank you. So, Vanessa, this question, we'll start with you. There must be a librarian in the audience, because the question is, what is your position on funding the libraries?
I support funding libraries. I think libraries are, we have a long history of libraries being a resource for our community, for education, for, in some cases, entertaining young kids with storytime. I think they are a resource now that we are using for, I know in some cases, cooling centers. I don't see any problem with somebody stepping into a library to cool off and get some water. Libraries are also important places for our community to gather, like we are today. And so, I, yes, I support libraries, and I absolutely do not think that we should stop having, stop funding public libraries. I think it's fine that we support some of the more digital uses for libraries, but I don't think that that competes with the need for our public libraries.
Okay, thank you. Steve, same question. What is your position on funding the libraries?
We need to take a close look at the purpose of libraries and their function in our community. It's evolving. IT, technological advancements, the internet, they've all really displaced a lot of the traditional functions of the library. I grew up with the Himmel Park Library. It was a great sanctuary on the weekends to go and read. That's all changed now with computers and the internet and issues of that nature. I think the important thing before we continue funding or increase funding to libraries is to analyze their purpose and their need as far as what the community is requiring. Is this anymore a place where people have to go in and check out books? I don't believe that that's the function anymore, or the main driving course of the library. Now, granted, there are other opportunities and events that could be utilized in the existing facilities, but do, does there need to be an evolution, an evolutionary look at libraries? Yes. Does there need to be a necessity evaluation for certain aspects of libraries? Yes. I think that with the bricks and mortars that we have, there are opportunities for the community to benefit from those bricks and mortars, but is it still the necessary function of the library that we have traditionally held? Let's look at new and innovative ways that we can modify or change or evolve these facilities and see how they develop.
Great, thank you. So, we gave you a couple of softballs to get started. So, these are getting into more pointed issues. So, we'll start with Steve. This question says, how do we balance affordable housing with overdevelopment, improving infrastructure, and limited water?
Well, first of all, with the limited water issue, there's no developments that are being allowed unless the developer proves and provides proof and information that the water supply will be maintained with the development. So, I have to give the city of Tucson kudos, because they've done a terrific job of saving and holding water in receptacles in, throughout the valley that have kept the water level very plentiful. We have had very good stewardship of our water. As a matter of fact, the prognosis that I've heard is that there's enough water supply in the holding tanks through Tucson Water that could last 50 years. As far as affordable housing and those aspects of affordability, I think a lot of the issues that we're dealing with have been caused by the federal government and by government in general that have created the housing problem and that have created the inflationary aspects of building homes that have not allowed homes to be affordable. I think if the government reduced its regulations, which, by the way, contribute, 40% of a home being built is due to government regulations. If those regulations were relaxed or removed or modified, the developers could spend more money building homes rather than accommodating regulations, and those need to be looked at.
Great, thank you so much. Vanessa, same question. How do we balance affordable housing with overdevelopment, improving infrastructure, and limited water?
Great question. I think great four questions that we could touch on individually, but affordable housing itself is one of the three main issues that are surfacing as I talk with the business community. I've met with the Tucson Metro Chamber, as well as SALC, who are concerned with affordable housing, but also with residents. It impacts everyone, from low-income families to seniors living on a fixed income. And so, in terms of affordable housing, I support a more multi-pronged strategy to address it. We need to increase the inventory of affordable and workforce housing. We have many tools available at Pima County to do that, including gap funding, which is funding that helps support the development of new affordable housing. I think we can do a better job, and then there's also down payment assistance through the Lighthouse Program that helps get first-time homebuyers into homes. But in terms of the development of new affordable housing, I think we have some great public-private partnerships with our many wonderful local builders that we can continue to work on and focus on affordable and workforce housing. In terms of water, this question actually came up from a 16-year-old a few months ago. How do we balance affordable housing with conservation? We have conservation guidelines in the Snore and Desert Conservation Plan that we can follow. That addresses some of the water concerns as well, but we also have an opportunity for infill development and transit-oriented development along existing infrastructure.
Okay, thank you both. So, this is kind of a part two to the same housing question. So, there's a comment, and then there's a question after that, and Vanessa, we'll start with you this time. It says, "In the mention of affordability, which both parties mentioned, the struggle gets worse for some people in our district. How do you, assuming you are elected, plan to handle this pressing issue of homelessness within," they said, "within the district specifically?" within, they said, within the district specifically?
So since the start of the pandemic in 2020, the unhoused population has skyrocketed. And I think there are a couple of ways that we can address it in terms of preventing homelessness as well as assisting those who are currently experiencing homelessness through eviction prevention programs. This is similar to what I just talked about with affordable housing, making sure that we're not pricing out low-income or seniors who are on fixed incomes. Also increasing the inventory of affordable housing. We have a shortage of affordable housing. So by addressing that, we are preventing more people becoming unhoused. So that's the first thing that we can do. In terms of assisting people who are currently experiencing homelessness, there are, on top of the affordability issue, there is a shortage also of temporary shelters and beds in temporary shelters. So we need to expand the temporary shelters that we have. I believe it's more than a thousand additional beds that we would need if we were to house any given day the number of unhoused individuals. But there's also a significant concern with substance abuse and mental health. So we need to provide those wraparound services for people experiencing homelessness so that they can get into housing, get a job, and not go back to being unhoused because of a health issue such as substance abuse or mental health.
Great, thank you. So Steve, same question. In the mention of affordability, which both parties mentioned, the struggle gets worse for some people in the district. How do you, assuming you are elected, plan to handle this pressing issue of homelessness within our district?
Well, I've been on the board now for eight years and I have had agenda items before me that have been voted on by the board going back these eight years involving millions and millions of dollars to address this issue. The emergency eviction legal system is a program. The rapid rehousing program is another federal-funded and state-funded program. Millions and millions of dollars have been funneled into Pima County to address these issues and we still have a horrific homeless problem. The issue is not necessarily the fact that people have no homes. The issue basically deals with mental illness and drug addiction that really has had a very difficult time being addressed. Those are issues, I think, that lead obviously to homelessness and to crime and to a very poor quality of life. I've been endorsed by the Tucson Crime Free Coalition because their businesses have a tax on them. And that tax is the damage and the crime that has been perpetrated by those who are suffering from addiction and from mental illness. And once those are properly addressed perhaps, then we can look at taking these millions of dollars that really have not answered the question. It's been basically throwing money at it. And what we need to do is make a more robust effort to find help and relief for those people who are suffering from mental illness and addiction.
Okay, so we have a couple of questions on roads that we'll go to next. Steve, we'll start with you. Do you have a solution to increase safety along roads that are currently deemed dangerous and have large numbers of accidents?
As a matter of fact, it's a timely question. We just had some situations out at the Diamond Cay Developments out in our district in Vail. There was a horrific accident. A young man was severely injured in an accident and the developer out there agreed to do something that they didn't have to do until certain rooftops, a number was triggered to build. And that number is a long way off and that is to put signalization at certain intersections along Old Spanish Trail. Old Spanish Trail, sometimes you think it's Monaco out there. The speeding is really out of control and I think it was somewhat of a factor in this accident. Our office worked very closely with the developer, with the Department of Transportation and with the Sheriff's Department, and we were able to reduce the speed along Old Spanish Trail as a result of this situation. So yes, with eight years' experience as a Board of Supervisor member and with my background in the State Transportation Board and the Regional Transportation Authority, I can assure you that if there are issues of this nature, we know how to address them. And that is a perfect example of how they are and have been addressed. And all of those areas that are unsafe or deemed unsafe or questionably unsafe, we can look at and draw determination.
Thank you. So same question to Vanessa. Do you have a solution to increase safety along roads that are currently deemed dangerous and have a large number of accidents?
Thank you. I think that this is an issue that, again, we should be looking at proactively instead of reactively. I appreciate the fact that when there is an accident and an injury and perhaps a fatality, that we take a closer look at safety measures. But there's so much more that we can be doing when we work collaboratively to proactively prevent some of these issues by making our roads safer. Part of that is looking at, one of the earlier questions related to public transportation, to making roads safer for pedestrians and cyclists. I've had conversations with some city staff and elected officials and there's a lack of, again, coordination and collaboration on some road safety measures that maybe start in the city limits and continue into District Four on the east side. And so I think with a county supervisor who is a little more proactive and advocating in advance of these types of accidents happening to make our roads safer, to think about intersections that need to be improved, we can prevent some of these accidents. Part of the issue as well is funding. And I think what we're going to have to do is win back the trust of voters so that down the road, we can have a conversation with voters about whether or not there is interest and support for a possible bond program to support more safety measures on our roads.
Okay, great, thank you so much. So the second question we have is about road repairs. You know, there's a lot, potholes, right?
Yes.
Everybody's got to know about potholes. So Vanessa, we start with you this time. What are your plans to address road repairs?
So the interesting thing about Pima County is we have a ten-year road repair and maintenance plan. Road repair and maintenance, that's it. It's a long list of roads that need to be repaved, resurfaced, sealed, over a ten-year period, and there's a set budget for it. We do not have a comprehensive, cost-effective transportation plan that is looking proactively at some of these needs in District Four, whether we're talking about road repairs and maintenance or we're talking about safety and additional infrastructure. So one of the things that I would do is, again, be able to sit down with the Department Transportation Head and sit down with my colleagues on the board to talk about a more comprehensive, cost-effective transportation plan that takes into all of these considerations into account instead of, again, working reactively to the potholes and simply having a ten-year plan to just fill potholes over the last ten, over the next five years now. We're halfway through that plan. So again, I think having a county supervisor who's willing to work collaboratively and proactively to advocate for the infrastructure needs to the benefit of District Four is a way to start to address those issues.
Okay, thank you. Steve, same question. What are your plans to address road repairs?
Well, this is one of the instances where I think I'm going to respectfully disagree with my opponent because I worked collaboratively with the Board of Supervisors back in 2019 when that ten-year road repair plan, which my opponent referred to, was first built and first put forward to the Board of Supervisors. It passed unanimously, five-zero, to fix and repair every road in unincorporated Pima County within ten years. Since that time, in District Four alone, we have repaired, and I mean not just potholes and not just spraying some sealant over it, but actually mill and fill some one hundred miles in District Four, all the way from Green Valley up into the Summer Haven community and throughout the Vale and Tancaverdi region. You speak to a lot of people in the Green Valley area and in the Vale area and they have said, we have had more roads fixed in the last couple of years, Supervisor Christie, than we have in the last couple of decades. So this plan is the most comprehensive plan we have and it did take collaboration and we passed it unanimously and it is probably the most fundamental and far-reaching road repair plan that we have and it has been very successful. And I'm proud to say that it's been, I think, one of our office's major accomplishments to provide that ability to listen to the public, make recommendations through the Pima County Road Repair Plan and to make sure that we continue this through the end of ten years.
Okay, great. So now we're going to go, these are a little bit random, they'll be a little bit all over with the different subjects that have been submitted. So Steve, we start with you. This next question says, with a variety of culture within Pima County, how do you plan to show support for the businesses, both big and small?
Say that again with the...
Yep. With a variety of culture within Pima County, how do you plan to show support for the businesses, both big and small?
Well, I think I've said it in certain statements just today and I think it's been proven for my last eight years that I've been an advocate for businesses, both big and, an advocate for businesses, both big and small. The cultural aspects make it even more effective for me to be involved in that because we have a very culturally diverse community and I want to make sure that any businesses that are starting in the private sector, regardless of who's starting them, have an opportunity to grow and prosper. This is really one of my most fundamental core beliefs about my job as a supervisor is to provide that voice, to provide that support, to provide that advocacy to the small business community. And it's even more effective and I think more attractive when the entire community culturally is involved. So my goal is to make sure that all businesses, great and small, mom and pop, culturally inclined or whatever, have an equal footing and a good support basis on how to provide their goods and services to the community and maybe pass it on to their family and their generations to follow. So I'm all in favor of supporting businesses of any kind, large or small, regardless of who's starting them.
Great, thank you. So same question for Vanessa. With a variety of culture within Pima County, how do you plan to show support for the businesses, both big and small?
So I'm going to address that in an area that is very personal and close to me. As I mentioned, I've worked in economic growth in the tourism industry for the past eight years. The tourism industry generates nearly $3 billion of investment through small and large businesses in Pima County annually. This is not a one-time investment. This is an annual investment into our community. One of the areas that I oversee in my work at Visit Tucson is our membership program. We have more than 500 business members at Visit Tucson who I work with on a daily basis. A handful of them are larger businesses. The majority of them are small, locally-owned businesses, from restaurants to attractions, art galleries. We have real estate agents who are partners, B&Bs, and then larger hotels and resorts. And so I think it's important to recognize that we often say in the tourism industry, a great place to live is a great place to visit. And it's because of the culture of our community and all of these businesses that make Tucson and Pima County a great place to live and a great place to visit. And so our work directly supporting these, you know, hundreds of local businesses, I think is a significant impact on our community. As I mentioned, I think it's $2.7 billion investment into local businesses, large and small, annually.
Great, thank you. This next question we have is on education and Vanessa will start first. What is your position on early education scholarships?
So Pima County has a program called PEAPS is the acronym, Pima Early Education Program. These are scholarships for high-quality, early childhood education. I support the investments in these programs. PEAPS and investments in early childhood education helps our community, helps working families in many regards. First of all, it provides education for young kids, allowing working parents to go to work. That's important, again, going back to this overarching concern of affordability in our community. The other important fact that I'd like to point out is that investments in early, high-quality early childhood education is a proven strategy. We have empirical data demonstrating that these investments save taxpayer dollars in the long run, reduce involvement in crime down the road, as well as substance abuse. And so I think we can all agree that those are beneficial and positive outcomes for our community and that we should be making these types of investments in high-quality, early childhood education.
Okay, great, thank you so much. Steve, same question.
Well, I don't think it's any secret with my voting record that I've never supported PEAPS. I feel that it's a subsidization of a very small portion of the community who is being helped through the largesse of the taxpayers that really doesn't have a far-reaching effect on what the goals are that the folks that support PEAPS are trying to attain. I sometimes have problems with the data that I've been showed about all the success issues that my opponent has alluded to. It is basically a subsidization of nursery school, basically. And I think that there are better ways to spend tax dollars. And by the way, these are significant tax dollars that come out of our general fund. And basically also, education comes from the state. This should not be a local issue or a county issue. If there's some kind of an education program, the state should be the one footing the bill, not the local taxpayers.
Okay, great, thank you so much. We have a question on unincorporated communities. Steve, we'll start with you first this round. How do you balance the interest of residents in unincorporated communities with those of city residents?
Well, there are pretty much just as many folks living in unincorporated communities than, as there are in the city of Tucson. It's a difficult situation because I live in the city of Tucson, yet I'm in District Four and we have obviously a huge amount of unincorporated issues. Why is it that folks live in unincorporated areas? Perhaps they don't want to live in an urban area or a city kind of environment. Perhaps they don't like the form of government or where their tax dollars in the city are going to or not going to. Perhaps they just want to be left alone and enjoy the Sonoran Desert and the beauty of the outlying ex-urban areas. Those need to be respected because that's why people move there and live there and they want to enjoy that lifestyle of being out in the country, but by the same token, not too far from major shopping centers and retail outlets. The folks in the city, certainly they have their own problems that they have to face with, but usually those are city-centric. So we have to judge each of the problems and the issues and concerns of both that come before our office and direct the solution accordingly. I believe most of my constituency is in the unincorporated areas and they need to voice and advocacy just as much as the city dwellers do.
Okay, same question for Vanessa. How do you balance the interest of residents in unincorporated communities with those of city residents?
So the data that I've looked at says that, I believe it was about 57% of voters, so not necessarily all residents, but voters in District Four, live within the city limits. So I think that's important to note. I live in unincorporated Pima County. I didn't know it was unincorporated Pima County when I bought the house. It's about two houses away from the city limits. So I did not choose to live in unincorporated Pima County. I chose a neighborhood that made sense for the schools that we needed to take our kids to and for our price point for buying a home. I think it's important to note also that being a district that, yes, more of the geographic area is unincorporated, Pima County, but the majority of the residents are within the city limits. Again, regional collaboration and coordination. We need to be able to work with the city of Tucson. Even if we disagree on issues where the city and the county may be at odds, we have to... be able to discuss issues. Ward Four in the city limits is a great example of that. There is a park that is owned, that Pima County acquired from the city of Tucson, it is in the city limits, and we have not made any investments to that park. That's an example of a resource that I think Pima County can be focusing on, for property that Pima County owns, for the benefit of residents that live in District Four and in Ward Four in the city limits, and that we haven't been investing in.
Okay, thank you both. This next question, we'll start with Vanessa first, is on gun purchases. The question from the audience is, "What is your position on requiring criminal background checks before a gun is purchased?"
That's a good question, and I'll probably be brief in my answer. I am in agreement, and I support public opinion that overwhelmingly supports common sense gun safety in terms of background checks, closing the gun show loophole, and banning assault weapons. My husband, who is here, is a hunter. We have guns in our home, they are safe, they are secure, and we both support the Second Amendment right to own guns. With that said, we do not feel at all like our rights are being diminished by requiring background checks or banning assault rifles, or closing the gun show loophole. I am also very proud that our campaign has the distinction as a Moms Demand Action Gun Sense candidate, and so I will continue, as a county supervisor, to advocate for common sense gun safety.
Okay, please hold your applause to the end, thank you. So the same question goes to Steve.
Well, I may be a bit more succinct than my opponent said she was going to be succinct, and I'll just simply say that I am in disagreement with her position, respectfully.
Okay, thank you. So I know we're getting into some tough subjects, let's just try to keep this as a discussion today. So, all right, the next one that we have is an environmental question, and let's see, we're going to start with Vanessa, or Steve this time, Steve's first this time, says, "What is your position on operating a mine next to residential communities and schools?"
I'm sure we're talking about Hud Bay, perhaps? I am born and raised in Tucson, Pima County, and as we know, copper has been one of the five Cs of the economic development of the state of Arizona. It's been part of the fabric of our society and our life in the state of Arizona. Many, many families have benefited from having jobs and careers in mining. We have a beautiful Caterpillar facility that builds mining equipment right in our own backyard, yet we have a situation of polarization about a mine that has been, in an area that has been mined for a couple of centuries now, at least within the last century. So to answer the question directly, I support mining, I support the mining industry, and I support the copper world project.
Okay, thank you. Same questions to Vanessa. "What is your position on operating a mine next to residential communities and/or schools?"
So I appreciate the fact that we need copper to fuel green technology, and I support green technology. I am not opposed to mining. I am opposed to unsafe mining that has the potential to pollute our water and to adversely affect a multi-billion-dollar tourism economy. I have been meeting with neighbors in Corona de Tucson and Green Valley, listening to their concerns, and they are deeply concerned with the health impacts of the mine. They're concerned about their water being polluted, they're concerned about their air being polluted, they're concerned with the significant amount of water that will be pumped from the aquifer, and they're concerned with the diminished property value of their homes and their properties. So with all of this information that I have, I am in agreement with the former Republican County Supervisor Ray Carroll, who consistently voted against mining in the San Aridas because of the health concerns of his constituents in Corona de Tucson, in Green Valley, and elsewhere in District Four.
Okay, so, let me think, I think we answered both of those. Okay, so, thank you both for your answers. This next one, we're starting with Vanessa. This is kind of a general question, so we'll probably take a couple more, and we'll go to three o'clock, so we have just a couple more questions. Vanessa, if elected, what is the one thing you believe you can do for the betterment of society?
Ooh, that's a big question. You guys are expecting a lot from a county supervisor, but I appreciate that. Well, let me go to, let me talk about what I think is a positive overarching issue that addresses a lot of our concerns, and that's the Prosperity Initiative that the Board of Supervisors approved, I believe it was last December. So the Prosperity Initiative looks at 13 interrelated policies that address the generational cycle of poverty, and that helps to reduce crime, reduce homelessness, increase individual wealth, and increase our community wealth, all good things for our community. It touches on workforce development, it touches on affordable housing, transportation, access to healthcare, and early childhood education that we talked about. So I think supporting the Prosperity Initiative, supporting the implementation of those 13 interrelated policies that also take into consideration climate change and how climate change impacts some of those issues, I think that's one of the biggest things that I will be able to do as a county supervisor, to improve the quality of life for all of Pima County residents.
Okay, thank you. Steve, same question. "What is the one thing you believe you can do for the betterment of society?"
I'm assuming it's our society here in Pima County, but I've spoken about the business community and the need to provide jobs and careers and opportunities for our residents to grow and prosper, and that requires economic development and attracting new companies and businesses into the Pima County area. And my three daughters, born and raised and gone through public schools, up through junior high, and they attended South Point as well, and then the University of Arizona, once they graduated, they couldn't wait to make a beeline to the coast California and San Diego, and that's one of the biggest problems we have, is the brain drain and the talent drain from our university that is supposed to be the nucleus of our economic growth and economic engine. So I'm going to continue to advocate for small businesses, for the creation of jobs, and for economic development attraction. Another issue that we have to deal with, this particular issue, is the crime and the quality of life that is affected by crime. We need to make sure that criminal activity is punished and that it is stopped, and that the public is protected, both their property and their lives. That needs to be highlighted. We have a great deal of effort now to defund or detract from law enforcement. That is what is causing, I think, a decreasing quality of life.
Okay, so we have two last questions I will ask. They're a little controversial, so if you could just hold your applause, and we'll keep things civil until the very end, just to hear opinions. So Steve, we're starting with you first. It says, "With the Dobbs decision directly affecting Arizona, what are your plans regarding reproductive freedom?"
Well, the Board of Supervisors has no control over the abortion issue or reproductive freedom. They like to put resolutions out, kind of intimating that they are taking positions, but they really have no effect. My feeling is that I am against abortion, except in extreme circumstances that affect the life or the health of the mother, rape or incest, and I think my biggest issue that I would have as far as a private citizen, because, as I say, the Board of Supervisors has no purview over this, is that taxpayer money not be used to fund abortions.
Thank you for that. So same question to Vanessa. "With the Dobbs decision directly affecting Arizona, what are your plans regarding reproductive freedom?"
So access to reproductive healthcare has deteriorated significantly since the overturning of Roe v. Wade. As a woman, I believe in the freedom to make decisions about my healthcare with my healthcare provider. I also have empathy with people who have to make very difficult decisions about their own healthcare. There is a local nexus here, I disagree with that assessment. I am proud to have the endorsement of the Planned Parenthood Advocates for Arizona, as well as Arizona List. I also am fully in support of the two Pima County resolutions that support access to reproductive healthcare, including abortion access. And the local nexus here is related to land use and zoning. As a county supervisor, I will make sure that there are not zoning codes in place that are restricting access, you know, creating barriers for the location of reproductive healthcare clinics that make access to healthcare more difficult for people who need that access. As I think you all know, abortion is on the ballot in November as a statewide issue. Yes, that will be determined at the state. I am a yes vote on Prop 139. It sounds like Supervisor Christie is a no vote, I respect that, but I hope you all will take that into consideration when you vote in November.
Okay, thank you so much. One last question, we're almost there. One last question, we're almost there. Vanessa, we'll start with you first. "Should Pima County be welcoming to immigrants seeking asylum in the United States?"
That's a great question. Washington has failed us, I think that's an area where Supervisor Christie and I agree. Washington has failed us, we need fewer photo ops at the border, and we need more action. Immigration policy, immigration enforcement is not a Pima County responsibility, that is a federal responsibility, and Congress needs to act. It is a Pima County responsibility to protect the safety and the public health in Pima County. And so to that end, I support using the federal grant funds that are coming through to Pima County to help get legal asylum seekers out of Tucson, off to their final destination as soon as possible, to prevent any public health or safety concerns. Having hundreds of people dropped off by Customs and Border Protection in Tucson is not something that we can ignore. By ignoring it, by refusing federal funds to help get them to their final destination, does not solve the problem. If there is another organization that can take over this, I fully support Administrator Jan Lesher's desire to, as she said, get out of the business of doing this, but short of having someone else step up, I fully support using these federal grant funds to help legal asylum seekers get to their final destination sooner than later.
Okay, thank you. Steve, same question. "Should Pima County be welcoming to immigrants seeking asylum in the U.S.?"
Well Supervisor, or excuse me, County Administrator Lesher stole my saying, that I've been saying now for several years, and said some years ago, that Pima County should not be in the asylum-seeking business. I was the one that made that original statement way back in 2020. We've put through the process 544,000 that we know of asylum seekers coming into Pima County to the tune of over $90 million in taxpayer money. And the problem with the issue is, we talk about a broken system. My opponents, or those who believe in continuing asylum-seeking processing, their position is they want more federal government involvement and help and funding and money and manpower to keep assisting and accommodating the sheltering, feeding, caring, clothing, and travel arrangements for the asylum seekers. My position is, we need the federal government to stop this effort at the border before the asylum seekers ever step foot into Pima County. All we've become, at this particular point, and everybody pats themselves on the back and puffs out their chest about the fact that we don't have any street releases, all we've done merely is accommodate them as far as a travel agency. We haven't released them in Pima County streets, but we've released them into the streets of other areas in the country. And I think that's the major crime that we're perpetrating by continuing this border. We need to shut down the asylum-seeking business, and close our doors, and let the world know it.
Okay, please hold your applause. So now, we're at the wrap-up stage. I think Steve went first, the introduction, so we'll have Vanessa go first this time. Any kind of wrap-up or any other final thoughts? You'll have two minutes.
Okay. Well, thank you all for the great and lively questions today, and for participating in the forum. Thank you for moderating. Thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting this today. I'd like to close by reiterating my support for the programs and policies that improve the quality of life for Pima County residents, for everyone in this room, regardless of your political affiliation. I support investments in early childhood education, in affordable housing. I support protecting democracy by accepting election results and by certifying elections, all of which the incumbent has voted against. My professional experience in land use planning, in community engagement, and in economic growth in the tourism industry have prepared me to be a strong leader for all of Pima County. I believe that serving as an elected official is a job, and it requires hard work. It requires you to be present and engaged with your constituents, and we do not feel like we have received that from the incumbent. County supervisor is not simply a title or a seat at the table, and I am eager and excited to roll up my sleeves and put in the hard work on behalf of constituents and residents in District Four. Our campaign has been about working collaboratively to make our community better, better for businesses, better for neighborhoods, and better for residents. And so I hope you will join us. You can visit vanessabectall.com to learn more about me and our campaign, to sign up to volunteer or to make a contribution, but most importantly, I hope you join us by voting for me on November 5th. Thank you so much for being here and giving me the opportunity to discuss our campaign with you today.
Okay, well, please hold your applause to the end. We're almost done, we're almost there, we're almost there. Okay, Steve, Steve, if you could give us any closing thoughts, the same thing, two minutes, sir.
Yes, I have to tell you, I am going to enjoy this campaign, because I am enjoying debating with you, and this is an excellent forum to do so, and I've enjoyed this very much, and I'm looking forward to the rest of the campaign. We've raised, I think, distinct differences between the both of us, and we have a clear choice of who we want to continue on, and I'm very appreciative of having this opportunity. I wanted to discuss basically quickly the vote certification. I just realized, when I got this memo from a friend, that this just happened. KJZZ Radio has announced that the Secretary of State's office said it erroneously declared the wrong winner in a Green Party's U.S. Senate primary after the canvas had been approved. So the canvas was approved, it was certified, but oh, they found an error. So you can't ask questions about any canvassing, even though they find errors. If you ask questions, which is our God-given right in the Constitution, which allows us to have an opinion about things, which allows us to express that opinion, we find out that if you say anything about an election or don't canvass it or whatever, you're an election denier. I question everything. And by this issue here with a canvas being certified, and oh, they found an error afterwards, just shows the fact that you have to question everything. I am a believer in the business community's ability to help the economy and the lives and the quality of life in Pima County. We attract more jobs, we give more people food on their table, we give them more opportunity, and this will include attracting outside businesses to come into Tucson. It's very difficult to do that because of the makeup of our political dichotomy on both the city council and on the Board of Supervisors. What business would want to come in when it is getting the feedback from our elected officials that they don't want businesses here? We need to grow, nurture, protect, and expand businesses, create jobs, and create prosperity. Thank you.
Okay, so here we go. Now we can give the applause, everybody. All right. So, thank you so much to Vanessa Bechtel and Steve Christie. Thank you so much today for your time. Thanks, everybody, for coming and being such good participants, and the League of Women... Please vote, please vote. If you're not registered, come see any one of us, we'll help you. help you. And thank you for coming today. We really appreciate it. Have a great day.